My apologies.
We're live.
Okay, now I have the time at seven o'clock and I'm going to go ahead and call the Germantownship Board of Trustees special meeting to order. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living and just as a whole. Thank you. Mr. Houston, if you could take the roll, please.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Raymert.
Here.
This is a special meeting of the Germantownship Board of Trustees. The purpose of the meeting is twofold. One, to hold a public hearing for case number 2020-35-ZC filed by Germantownship zoning for Kyle Brummett, 48 McClure Road, Lebanon, Ohio, 45036. And also, the second item of business is to discuss the use of funds received through the CARES Act for coronavirus relief.
All right. Can we have everybody mute unless you're talking? That way we don't have any backfeed on there as well? Okay. All right. So the purpose of the zoning hearing, or the purpose of the first part of the zoning hearing, Mr. Houston just stated. So the trustees will review the case and receive testimony from both Mrs. Sewell, as well as the applicant, and then the citizens will also have a chance to speak. So we will do this hopefully in an organized manner and be as respectful as possible to all, to everyone, to residents, to applicants, to everybody. And so the residents will be, or everyone will be, under oath. So I'm trying to think if there's anything else I need to cover that I have not covered. Anyone that wishes to speak, obviously you will have a chance to speak. We will just have to take turns in an orderly fashion. So first, the first thing that we are going to hear, I believe, is the zoning inspector presentation.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes, sir.
The first thing we need is a motion to open the public hearing.
All right. I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case 2020-35-ZC.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Stubbs, right?
It's Tyler.
Oh, it's Tyler. I'm sorry.
No worries, Mr. Raymert.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the public hearing is open and now we can hear from Mrs. Sewell.
Thank you, Mr. Houston.
Thank you, guys. So I am just going to go over this packet that you all have. Hopefully you have had time to review this. So the front is just the exhibit page. We will have the staff report, the zoning application, including the affidavit, deed, and resolution, the recommendation from Montgomery County, the recommendation from the Germantownship Zoning Commission, the plot plan, some photo overhead views, lists of property owners within 300 foot, which I will not name those here. That's just for your records. And then in addition to that, the public hearing notices that I have sent out. So Exhibit A is the staff report. Again, this is case 2020-35-ZC filed by Kyle Brummett. The address in question is 9391 EB Road in Germantown, Ohio. Parcel ID is D14009040053. The proposed change is to change the split zone of residential one and agricultural to B4. The applicant, Kyle Brummett, has applied for the zoning of his property, parcel D14009040053. The property is currently split residential one and agricultural and would like for it to be changed to B4. Again, there is an attached document that is titled Brummett Current Zoning that shows the current zoning of the property. On the application, it states he would like to use the existing pole barn and property to operate a private investigation and security company. This would consist of a few offices and occasional training for the employees as most of their daily work is off-site. It also states the company is licensed through the Department of Public Safety and could potentially help deter any potential criminal activity. Directly surrounding this property are additional B4 lots, agricultural and residential districts. In the general area of this property are other business districts and industrially zoned districts. I also want to make note that this, once I start this process, this paper does not change, but we do get additional information while this is going. And we have been in contact with the applicant and he has stated that they no longer want to do training on the property. And part of the business four district is, or was specifically for that training. So we don't necessarily have to go for that one. You guys are also, you guys also reserve the ability and the right to obviously approve or deny. You can also modify this in any way that you all see fit. So if there's a lesser district, since they will not be doing the training on the property, you guys also have the ability to look at those as well. Following that staff report is the applications, or the application, and like I stated, all of the other documentation. And that is the conclusion of my report. Did you guys have any questions?
My question, and this might be a question for later, was you mentioned going with different possibilities other than B4. Do you have a list of those that we can see the different?
Yes. Let me see here. I'm going to share my screen with you guys. Okay. Can you all see my screen now?
Yes.
All right. So here on the screen, you can see how we have everything from agricultural to industrial. And originally, the applicant was looking at the business district. The business district does have, and this is also included in the case packet for you to review. Here, number 10 is outdoor recreation use. So that, in addition to there already being B4, district very close to this property, I believe is the reason that we went that, they went that direction. Let me look here. So then there are some additional options, obviously anything lesser than B4. We do have an office residential district. And there obviously are required conditions for every district.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I believe that the applicant was looking at the office residential one district, but he did advise me that, you know, whichever district that you guys think would be best, obviously. And then whatever they have to do, whatever they have to do to comply with that district, they're more than willing to do.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. I don't know if anyone else has questions, but that was mine. All right. So I believe that brings us to the applicant to give her presentation if they would like.
All right. I actually sit here in the office with these. I'm just going to turn my computer to him.
Thank you.
Do I need to swear in or anything?
Yes. So glad you said that. So there is an oath that I will read. And so I'll just, I know this is kind of weird because we are through the computer, but if you could just raise your right hand and I will read it aloud and you'll just say, "I do," if you do. So do you solemnly swear or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Could the speaker also identify himself by name and address?
Okay, my name is Kyle Brummett. I own the property at 9391 EB Road, Germantown, Ohio. And my full resident is 408 McClure Road, Lebanon, Ohio.
Thank you. You can go ahead and give your presentation.
Okay. So our basic thing that we always wanted to do was actually just have our office there. I know previously it was brought up as far as why there. We like the isolation of everything. We get to actually design the pole barn as to what we want it, how we want it set up and so forth. Just to kind of elaborate a little bit on it, I don't want to go too far in detail with it. The training was going to happen and we actually found other means. We moved that actually elsewhere in a totally different city. So right now, the biggest thing is, is we're wanting to have our office there where we have enough room for the, I think we have two patrol vehicles and there's only going to be three of us, counting myself, there from regular business hours. Any other activity that's going to be around that area will only be as far as swapping out vehicles to go wherever they need to go to wherever their sites are. We love the location of where it's at. Like I said, it's again, it's isolated and that's really what we're pushing for. No outside activities or recreational use will be permitted on my property at that point. Like I said, everything will be moved out of the city, so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone, any testimony from anyone that would be in favor of the proposed application? Anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposed application this evening? Feel free to unmute yourself. If you are one of those individuals, you are able to unmute yourself to speak.
I will, let me do the call-in users here real quick.
Okay.
All right. So anybody that's a user, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. So please, if you're not speaking, make too much noise. Okay, I believe every person that is a call-in user is unmuted.
Are there any people that would like to speak in favor of the application for zoning change? I am not seeing anyone. I see a few people unmuted still, but I am not hearing anyone speaking.
Okay. Go ahead and mute it here. All right, everybody.
Okay. So at this time, it would be time for the testimonies of those in opposition of the proposed application. As you just saw me swear in, Mr. Brummett, I would, I need to do that with you as well. So, and after that, please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Houston, before we begin, would you like to do the letters now or following the public comments?
I'd be happy to do the letters now, Mrs. Reed. Do you want to swear me in also?
Oh, I would love to. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
We have received four pieces of correspondence against, opposed to the zoning change. The first one is very short and sweet. It's from a woman by the name of Connie Chapman. We do not have her address. So I think you should probably discount a little bit what she is saying, but she simply said this. "Just writing to say I don't want the zoning changed on EB Road." The second correspondence came from Brent Walters, who lives at 10250 EB Road. Hello, my name is Brent Walters. I live at 10250 EB Road and would like to voice my objections to changing the zoning at the intersection of Route 4 and EB. First, I would like to express my concerns about the property owners already violating federal law regarding discharging a firearm within 1,000 feet of a school. U.S. Code 18-922 and 18-921 makes this a federal crime and includes public and private schools. There are exceptions for the property owner. In the last zoning meeting, it was stated they used the property for training and employees have shot there three times. Since employees are not the owners, this would be a criminal offense. One of my concerns is if they are already ignoring laws, there is a great risk of other laws being ignored. My next concern is the intersection is extremely dangerous. I have lived in EB Road for 34 years. I have seen serious accidents, almost been hit succession times, watched people pass cars as they turn, causing accidents, and know that there have been at least three accidents at this intersection recently. By changing zoning, we permanently change what the property can be used for. If they sell and the buyer decides to put in a car wash, the zoning has already been changed and an extremely dangerous intersection becomes an even higher traffic area. We live in the township because we do not want to live in business districts. There is a business district two miles up the road at Triangle Station with property for sale and multiple storefronts for lease. If the owner intended to use the property for business, they should have bought business zone property or went to Triangle Station. This is not fair to the dozens of homeowners that spent excess of $100,000 to $200,000 to live in this quiet area to let one property ruin this. Thank you, Brent. Our third correspondence is from Eric and Teresa Walters, who live at 10150 EB Road, Germantown, Ohio. And this is a handwritten letter, so I may stumble as I'm reading it. I'll do my best. It just was given to me shortly before the meeting. To whom it may concern, we are writing this letter in regards to the request to rezone the corner property at Route 4 and EB Road, the parcel ID number D14009040053 from agricultural residential to business four. We have several concerns with this petition of rezoning. One, the owners of this property previously petitioned to open a safety training facility with CCW classes offered. Also, this is a concern that they may continue to use this property for gun shooting activities. Two, there have been three car wrecks at the corner of Route 4 and EB Road in the last two weeks, so more traffic is a concern also. Three, the proximity of the shooting range to the school across the street is of great concern. We understand that on private property, you can shoot on that property, but when you accept payment, that's a whole different ballgame. That makes it a business and illegal to be shooting that close to the school. Four, also in the event that Mr. and Mrs. Brummett would decide to sell the property after rezoning it business, that would open up that property to several different types of businesses in an area that is mainly residential. We have several business districts in our town and the township. I feel if you don't, if, excuse me. I feel if you want to open a business, it should be in one of these areas. The Brummets have chased this property, knowing it was a residential agricultural area. Thank you, Eric Walters and Teresa Walters. Our fourth and final correspondence is from Candace Tate Davis, who lives at 9921 EB Road in Germantown. Again, this is a handwritten letter, so I will do my best to read her writing. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter regarding the recent request to rezone the corner of Route 4 and EB Road, parcel, one, excuse me, parcel ID D14009040053 from agricultural residential to business four. I have several concerns regarding this request and they are as follows. One, it has been previously stated that the property will be used for training of employees and for CCW courses. As I understand, this is private property. However, when holding CCW courses, there is a financial exchange, therefore making that be a business. Two, the proximity to the school, it is unsafe for the children to be outside while they are having training or shooting drills. Three, shooting drills or CCW classes in proximity to coons. Four, requesting for a lesser business district zone. I feel that this property was purchased as residential agricultural property. If you purchase the property zoned as this, sorry, if you purchase the property zoned as this, you were well aware that it was not zoned business. This property is in a very residential area. I purchased my property as residential. At no point have I thought to myself, "I think I want my home to be a Don's Pizza. Can I get my zoning changed on my property?" Five, this property was purchased for roughly $45,000. Rezoning this property drastically raises the value of the property. And looking to the future with the Land of Illusion empire that is being proposed, that property would be a great place for many businesses. I understand Mr. Brummett states he has no intent to sell the property. However, everyone has a price. In the coming years, Land of Illusion intends to build bars, restaurants, hotels, an indoor water park, and a campground. By zoning this property, excuse me, by zoning this property to a lesser zone here, are, if, this is hard to read. By zoning this property to a lesser zone, here are some examples of what could be built in this area in the event Mr. Brummett decides to sell. B1. B1, bakery, salon, candy, or ice cream shop, a drugstore, laundry, mat, laundry mat, or a grocery store. Again, I purchased my home based on the fact that it is in a residential area. I have no interest in living beside a drugstore, especially a drugstore on Route 4 between Dayton and Middletown. I'm just speculating that it would not be safe. B2, antique shop, appliances store, school supply store, car accessories, bakery, retail stores, salons, pool hall, bowling alley, bookstore, bridal store, machine shop, bakery, or photo supply. A business zone two allows a bowling alley or pool hall to be built. What a great addition to the Land of Illusion empire. No thanks. Again, this type of business in this area will not do well as far as safety goes. B3, auction house, car rental, car repair, photo printing, data processing, restaurant, HVAC, hotels or motels, indoor recreation, mower service center, and I think that's laundries. As previously stated, by rezoning opens up the opportunity for these businesses to move into this predominantly residential area. O2, library, museums, studios, banks, hospitals, medical research facility, nursing homes, non-retail office space, TV, radio stations, non-research labs, vet offices, rooming houses. Examples of rooming houses would be group homes for drug addicts, recovering, group homes for psychiatric patients, or group homes to reintroduce criminals back into the population, churches, and public-owned buildings. As previously stated, a lesser zoning could, oh, a lesser zoning opens up the opportunity for these businesses to move into this predominantly residential area. Kettering Medical may look at that corner and think it's a great location for an ER. It's between Dayton and Middletown, close to, for the gratis population. Now, with all this being said, I would like to reiterate, this property was purchased by the Brummets with the understanding that this property is residential agricultural. Changing the property zoning should not be considered if they are so eager to have a business in Germantown. We have several areas that are already zoned business. Montgomery County recommended a denial due to the conflict with adjacent residential land issues. The Germantownship Zoning Board denied the rezoning and I like to think you as the trustee board will take that into consideration. Again, we have several areas in the township and in town that are zoned business. If Mr. and Mrs. Brummett are determined to open a business in our area, I am sure there is an open area in one of the districts. I am aware my letter spoke a lot regarding the future. However, we need to look to the future to protect what we have here in Germantown. I would like to reiterate the fact that I purchased my home as a residential property, being surrounded by residential homes, not businesses. Thank you, Candy. Also, just to mention, I am not against growth in businesses in our town township. I just feel that we have these business districts set up and that is where the growth for businesses should be. I trust that you as our trustees will have the best for our community, township, and town when making this decision, as it opens up an area of what ifs and affects the town and township. I hope you are keeping the opinion of our community members in I hope you are keeping the opinion of our community members in mind. And that concludes the written correspondence we have received, and I will mute.
All right, thank you, Mr. Houston, for reading all of those. Do we have anyone that would like to give testimony in opposition of the proposed application? If so, like I said before, you would need to be sworn in, state your name and address, and we would go and order us to get everyone a chance to speak. Is there anyone who would like to unmute and speak in opposition of the proposed application?
Abra, I'll go ahead and unmute the ones that I believe are via telephone only. So they have the opportunity as well. Give me just a second.
Thank you.
All right, I believe everybody that is via telephone only is now unmuted.
Is there anyone that is telephone only that's unmuted that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed application? I am not seeing anyone. And I don't believe we have anyone in the chat that has commented either when I look there. Do we have anyone that's on the computer, anyone at all that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed application?
It looks like Heather would like to speak, so I will go ahead and mute everybody.
Okay, I need to swear her in, so don't, don't mute me yet.
Okay.
Is it Heather? Are you unmuted?
Heather is unmuted. Go ahead.
All right, Heather. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer I do. Are you able to hear me, Heather? You can hear me. We cannot hear you, Heather, if you're talking. We are unable to hear you, or at least I am unable to hear you.
Heather, what platform you're using?
Could you try to call via phone? Yes, you, you can try to call via phone. Do you have the email that has that code to call in via phone? It should have been right below the link to call in to get, or to get on the internet this way. On our end, at least on my computer, it appears that you're unmuted. For, for some reason, I'm just unable to hear you.
Okay.
I think I can hear you now.
Are you able to hear me now?
I can, I can. Let me go ahead and read that statement again.
Yay.
Okay. Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer I do.
I do.
Thank you. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, this is Heather Caskey. My address is 9284 Germantown, Middletown Pike, Germantown. And my property is immediately adjacent to the property in question. I did want to know if I could ask a question as to what is being presented to the Board of Trustees. I'm, I'm curious to know what was, what is given to you all as far as what, what was said at the zoning meeting? And if, in fact, you, you were notified that there was a denial in the, the request of the change, obviously? And if there was any other mentionings of, of suggestions or recommendations?
So I think that is a twofold question, and I'll try my best to answer it. I may need help from Mr. Raymond or Mr. Stubbs or Mrs. Sewell as well. Yes, we are aware that it was denied by the zoning board as far as what documents we are given prior to this meeting. So we are not given, as far as testimony that was given at the last zoning hearing, we are not given that information of what was said from citizens, either for or against it. So we are given the application from the resident or from the individual. We are given property details or description of how the property is zoned. We are also given who was mailed the letters, who is in the 300 yards, I believe, zone around the property. We're given the Planning Commission from the county, their recommendation. We were also given that. It was recommended from them to, to deny it. I believe we're, we are given kind of the deed from the property as well. But I believe that's all that, that we were given. Is that what you were asking?
Yes, I just, I, I wanted to reiterate, I was at the zoning meeting, and I just, you know, the zoning commission confirmed quest. It did not state a proposal, suggestion, or recommendation at that time of a lesser district. They, they denied the request, you know, as they felt there would be a more suitable location for their business and had, had wished them well. So I, I guess I wanted to first make sure that, that that is, you know, known that, that obviously that they, they denied, and they did not give recommendation for lesser district at that time.
Abra, do you want me to speak on that?
Let's let her finish, and then, and then, because I, I think I have some questions about that as well that we'll probably touch on when we get to that.
Absolutely.
I'm more than happy to go into further detail about that, because I, I actually did get the statement. I, I tried to get what was going to be submitted to you all. I wasn't able to, which is fine. But I did get the letter from the Montgomery County Commissioner, his statement. And it, it in quotes says, "Please be advised that on August 13th, 2020, the Montgomery County Planning Commission recommended denial of zoning case 2020-35-ZC in Germantownship for the requested rezoning to B4 Business due to the potential for conflict with adjacent residential land uses, but suggested that other less intensive districts be considered for the subject property by both the applicant and the zoning commission." I first want to say that a recommendation is advice. A suggestion, the definition of a suggestion is an idea to consider. So to say that the Montgomery County recommended a lesser...
We lost you again. I'm unable to hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, so the, I'm not sure what last part of what you, you heard me saying, but I, I gave the definition of a recommendation is advice, and a suggestion is an idea to consider. The zoning commission did not discuss that a consideration of a lesser district at that meeting at all. They, they, they did state that they were in agreement with Montgomery County in the denial of the request, but there was nothing mentioned that they were recommending a lesser district. And I, I feel like if that's how it's being presented, then whoever is presenting this material is, is not giving it in a correct manner. And it's important that unbiased facts are presented to the trustees for further decision. So I, I just wanted to say from my end, I was there, and they denied the request, and they said they felt that there were more suitable locations for their business. Anyhow, moving on, obviously, I'm opposed to any type of business or commercially zoned property being attached to my residential property. We, we purchased it for the peace, tranquility, and seclusion, the, the surrounding, you know, nature and wildlife. All of the surrounding lots that are immediately adjacent to the applicant's property are zoned either agriculture or residential. So rezoning the property to business would not be consistent with neighboring properties. Additionally, as others mentioned, I'm concerned about the future. If it's rezoned, the selling of the business property and future uses of the property could have significant impact to the surrounding residential neighborhood. And lastly, and I think some others mentioned this too, there's insufficient road infrastructure. There's a lot, the lot is irregular in terms of the road frontage and the location of the driveway. And the driveway is an immediate hazard due to where it's located. I don't know if you're able to bring up pictures or whatever, but it's at a hidden angle right there at the corner of that very busy intersection. And that presents a traffic, you know, risk for accidents and already at that congested intersection. So that's all. I hope that you will all objectively evaluate the facts of the case and, and deny the change of zoning. So thank you very much, and that's all.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed application? You are also able to go in the chat if you would like to, to let us know that you would like to speak. I am not seeing anyone unmute. I'll give you another second or two to let us know if you would like to speak. I am not seeing anyone unmute. So at this time, I believe the testimony from those in favor. Is there something I'm missing, Mr. Houston? I just saw you unmute.
When all the testimony and, and comments are completed, then we can have a motion to close the public hearing before the trustees begin their deliberation.
Okay, I know that Mrs. Sewell had a letter that she had to read, that she would like to read. It was from the applicants. They submitted a letter, so if she has that letter, we'll do that real quick.
Yes, sorry, I completely, I completely just overlooked it. And then Mr. Houston, reading the letters reminded me. So I do want to touch very briefly on Ms. Caskey's speak that she did. So what she read was the exact letter from the Planning Commission. And then, and this is within your packet as well, trustees. The packet from the Montgomery County Planning Commission and the packet from the zoning commission. And the zoning commission letter states, "Dear trustees, please be advised that on September 3rd, 2020, the German Township Zoning Commission recommended a denial as proposed of zoning case 2020-35-ZC in Germantownship for the requested rezoning to Business Four. There was no additional explanation of this denial." So there are those. And for anybody listening, just so that you guys are aware, whenever we receive a change in zoning application, there are several things that I listed that are exhibits. They go first to Montgomery County. Then the zoning commission gets that same packet with Montgomery County's letter included. And then after the zoning commission hearing, the Board of Trustees gets the exact same letter. Then additionally with the zoning commission letter. So they all get the same information. So the information that I did receive recently from the owner, it is titled "Property Proposition from September 30th, 2020. To whom it may concern, I, Kyle Brummett, the CEO, President of Intelligence Risk Management, purchased the property located at 9391 EB Road, Germantown, Ohio 45327, to utilize the pre-built structure for our office operations consisting of three employees, counting myself, during regular business hours. This will not be open to the general public, as this is a private agency. After performing our due diligence, we found being open to lesser districts such as an Office Residential One would be in the best interest of IRM. For the purpose of pursuing a small office setting, no outside recreational use will be performed on this property located at 9391 EB Road, Germantown, Ohio 45327. There will not be a training and/or shooting range established at this aforementioned location. IRM has found a permanent nearby facility that we can utilize for any and all training exercises. We believe our presence would be great, would be a great asset to the community to deter any and all potential crime that may, may arise in the area. Sincerely, Kyle Brummett." And that is all.
Thank you. All right, really quick before I, we make a motion to close the public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to come forward? I am not seeing anyone wishing to come forward at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on a second. Who was it this time?
Mr. Raymond again.
Thank you.
All right, so...
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now into the deliberations section of the meeting.
So I believe Mrs. Sewell just touched on this a little bit about the zoning board decreasing, I guess, if you will. I'm not sure if that's the correct word. The, what, what the applicant has requested. I know they requested a B4. There are numerous other things that we could reduce the zoning down to. So I don't know if that's, I, how you guys feel about it. I know there was some questions about, about what that looks like for the surrounding people. One of my questions, and I'm not sure, the applicant mentioned regular business hours. Being a defense business, regular business hours, is that the same as an eight to five or a nine to five kind of thing, or is that, in the evening, that would be one thing that, that would worry me?
Was that a question?
Yeah, if, if he's allowed to answer that question this time, now that we've closed the public hearing. I meant to ask that earlier. What is regular business hours?
You, you can ask the question, and he may answer it.
Okay, thank you.
We're only open from usually eight to four, because that's usually about what every client that we deal with, that we actually deal, like, talk with. So if anything, anything after hours is usually just coming to pick up the car and leaving. It's not, nobody's sitting around there making anything or any, doing anything along those lines. I would say the only time you would see more activity at night is if, say, for instance, a natural disaster happens, and we're getting called out for it. We never had to really group up like that at all, besides for the tornadoes, when it hit, when it struck Dayton.
All right, thank you. That, that was one of my questions I wrote down when you were speaking. So I appreciate that, that clarification. I don't know if Mr. Stubbs or Mr. Raymond has any questions or comments as well.
I'll, I'll add some color from my perspective, and then I definitely need some discussion with you, Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs. You know, just understanding what's going on with the case, reading about it, looking at B1, 2, 3, and 4, and reading through those, and also understanding, you know, the, the residential folks that live there, the residents of that area, and what their concerns are. I, I agree with a lot of what they're saying. I do understand both what would, what could happen if we were to rezone this to business in any way, and what the future may look like. I understand there's a lot of concerns there, and that is obviously just something looking to the future, but we obviously need to think about that to some degree. I also will say that, you know, reading through what Montgomery County has adjusted, both the recommendation of the denial, I agree with, as a business B4. I'd also agree that I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose considering it for any of the B1, 2, 3, or 4s, because I don't think it's the right thing to do for that area. But then when it talks about suggested other less intensive districts be considered, I do think that's the appropriate thing that we should do. And I think OR1 is the only one that makes sense that I've read through. And now, being that this was just proposed in the last 24 hours, I, I can't say that I have enough understanding. But what I'll say is, if I can just read OR1, so everyone is clearly on the same page. In the preamble, it says, "This district has been established..." clearly on the same page, in the preamble, it says, "This district has been established to provide for a mixture of residential, small office, and professional service establishments, which will maintain the residential appearance of the neighborhood, and which will not create or generate a great amount of traffic or noise." Essentially, in my perspective, meaning that you should blend in with the residential setting, and not disrupt the residential setting in any way with noise or traffic. I do think this is the way Mr. Brummett is proposing now his, his business be operated. It has a few things in OR1 that I'm not completely sure that they meet. I think the intention is more of having a residential home on the property and maybe operating a business out of the back or adjacent building that's close to it. It talks about, "Such building shall front onto a collector or arterial with a right-of-way of 60 feet or more, as established on the official thoroughfare planned for Montgomery County." I can't say for sure that that is the case. I believe that is true from what I've seen from the property, but I haven't measured it. Part B, and this is under Section 1704, with the required conditions of OR1, it says, "The office establishment shall be conducted principally in the daylight hours and shall not create a nuisance from noise, smoke, or odor." I definitely think they align with that. I mean, even if they were to have a few visits in the evening, or, or after, you know, dusk, that principally their daylight is, is the hours they would be operating, so I think, I don't see an issue there. And then Section C, which is the final requirement, is, "No alteration of the principal resident, residential structure shall be made with changes to the essential appearance therefore as a dwelling." There is only a pole barn on this property. I don't know, there's, there's definitely not a dwelling that I'm aware of. And so, again, I think this fits within the nature, but I do have some concerns, because as, as one of the residents had mentioned previously, you know, there is some vagueness on what else could fit into an OR1. For instance, it talks about a nursery or daycare, a barber, a beauty shop, other professional services such as physicians, surgeons, dentists, lawyers. It does mention rooming houses and adult group homes, which are a lot of the concerns the residents had for the other business districts. And so, I still see those as somewhat of a concern. Now, in the spirit of what OR1 is, I think this meets within what the spirit of OR1 is, but I think they're still worth discussion, and I want to hear your guys' perspective on that.
I actually agree with everything you just said. Mr. Raymer, the, the thing about barber and beauty shops, what I see there is, it says it is a one-tier operation. So to me, you know, if in, I don't know, 10, 15 years, they sell it and it becomes a barber or beauty shop, it says it's a one-tier operation, so it wouldn't be like this big, you know, barber shop or, or beauty salon. It sounds like it is one person at a time coming in and, and getting their, their hair done or cut or whatever it may be. So it, hopefully that rests their mind a little bit, that it would not be a giant establishment. It doesn't appear that way in, in what I'm reading. So, that's actually the same one that I had pulled up and notes I had taken was OR1. I think it fits best, kind of a compromise, I guess, if you will, that I, that I see. So, I don't know. Mr. Stubbs, do you have anything to add to that?
While we have the authority to choose a different district, I'm not sure, since it's gone through this entire process, to change it 24 hours prior to the meeting doesn't necessarily seem appropriate to me. I understand that we have the ability to do it, but when it goes through the entire process and is denied at the county as well as our zoning, for, for us to just change it last minute, and when all, when all residents in the area have, that have spoken out, have objected to it, I, I don't think would be a good idea.
I have a question for Haley on that comment, because, Mr. Stubbs, I do agree with you, especially late in the game, but the question I have for Haley is, if we were to deny this rezoning, are, are they allowed to reapply and go back through the process with OR1 as being the primary through the county, et cetera?
So, there's a few different ways that it can play out. You guys do reserve the right, if you believe that another district fits better, you can just go ahead and assign that tonight. If you guys deny it completely, they can restart the process, or they can appeal it with Montgomery County. Does that all make sense?
It does, and I appreciate that. I would say, I'm trying to fully think through that, because I agree with Mr. Stubbs. I feel like the opportunity to think this through a little bit more in the beginning might have made sense, and, and having the opportunity for the Zoning Commission to weigh in on that, specifically on OR1. I would like to know what their position is as they are the Zoning Commission. Further, it would give the opportunity for the residents to also weigh in on it, but ultimately, it may end up in the same exact place back here with us having the same discussion. So I feel like it is for us to go ahead and consider that.
If they reapply, if they, if you guys denied it completely, and they reapplied for a different district, it would go through the exact same process again. So you guys would hear it. If they, so if you guys denied it tonight and they reapplied tomorrow with a different district, it would be probably about 60, 60 to 90 days, and you guys would hear the case, the new case, it would be a new case, but you would hear it.
Well, but we're making the assumption, the Zoning Commission, there's, there's different facts now, right, than when the Zoning Commission heard this. They have decided not to do a range, they are not doing training on there, they only want a small office building, is what he stated explicitly on his company letterhead of what he wants to operate. They would be applying for a different zoning, so the use and the zoning would be different that the Commission would be hearing on.
The use potentially would not be different, but the zoning, the actual, what they put on the application for the zoning would be different. Does that make sense?
I don't have any additional questions. I guess, I would ask if, if Mrs. Reed or Mr. Stubbs, if you have additional questions. I, I'm not sure I have any additional questions at this moment.
I have, I have a question, I guess, for Haley. So you mentioned that the use would not be different. So my understanding of the zoning hearing, which I did not attend, is that at the zoning hearing, there was a lot of discussion about the gun range or the shooting range. If they were to apply again for the OR, OR1, or whatever district they so, lesser district that they so choose, that would still be part of what the, they, they couldn't request that, because it would be a lesser district, correct?
Correct. Also, my, you might want to go refer back to the packet.
Yes.
It would be the third page in your packet. And that specifically goes over their initial, this is their initial, the only application, their initial application, and what they requested to begin with.
So the reason, looking at this, that they went for the B4 was for the range? Is that correct?
For training, yes. So, I, I believe that there was two reasons. Not necessarily one over the other, but they were initially looking at training, which they have advised that they are not anymore. And then, directly across the street from this property is a B4 property as well. So typically, you know, typically like residential districts are all clumped together, office districts are all clumped together, business districts are all clumped together. And I know they can be scattered a little bit here and there, but I do know that there is another B4 property directly across the street. So I think those were the two main reasons for B4.
Can anybody elaborate more? I know, Haley, you may only have what was read, and I'm not asking for you to misremember or just try to recall, but was there any more explicit reason that they didn't consider other districts at the Zoning Commission hearing?
They did go into executive session, so I am not pivi to that information, but they did not mention anything. They just said, on, on the record, they said that it was denied as, let me read it, I don't want to read it wrong.
Yeah, I, I have that in front of me. Okay.
Just denied as proposed, yeah.
I know there was a lot of focus on the, the range aspect at the Zoning Commission. Did listen into a portion of it until I had a conflict, so I am familiar to that degree. I didn't get to hear the, the end and the, the summation or the result, but that, I think that's my concern, is that there was a lot of focus on the range and the activity on the property and the discussion around the B4, whereas I think we're in a different situation right now. And I agree with Mr. Stubbs that, you know, I feel like this is something that, that should have been considered and presented to the Zoning Commission for them to evaluate. But again, I think that we're in this situation, so I'd ask for Mr. Stubbs and his experience with this, Mrs. Reed, your experience with this, what your, what your thoughts are, if we should hear this or have this go through the process again with the OR1. And I, I really, to be honest, I don't even want to suggest what they should propose. It's, it's up to them if that meets their needs, but I definitely think that the B4, it doesn't fit in with what was, what's in that, that line of adjacent properties there.
So to be honest, Mr. Raymer, we've had, in my, I guess, three years on the board, we have only had one other zoning case come before the board, so it's not a thing that happens frequently.
Yeah.
So, as far as giving you guidance from past knowledge, it's hard to give you some of that, because it just doesn't happen that often. I'm not sure how many times it's happened for Mr. Stubbs, who's obviously been on it several more years than I have. So, I don't, I'm, I'm, I feel like you and I are on the same boat, I'm a little torn, so.
Okay.
I'm not much help with that.
Mr. Stubbs, do you have anything further to add before you make a decision?
Just that, it's only happened a couple times since I've been here. I think we approved one, we denied one in that time. But the other thing is, typically trustees are not supposed to attend the Zoning Commission meetings, because the decision we make tonight has to be based solely on the information that we gathered tonight. So, the gun range and stuff like that, while I've heard rumors, is not, is more news to me, but that's where I'm at. I mean, I, I, I'm not going to, I don't feel like I'm in a position to tell any, to tell the applicant which other zoning fits better, when, when they need to go through the whole process, I, I believe the right way. So, I, I am not in favor of changing the zoning on this property at this time.
So I, I think it's fine to open up for the motion, if we want to do that, unless you have additional questions, Mrs. Reed. What I would say is, my understanding is, we're supposed to find out as much as we can about these cases, so we can make a, a decision about them. And so, if we can understand all facts and matters that have been presented and, and what to consider, that's what we should be trying to do. So, we can take that offline and have a discussion about that, but, or if, if necessary. But regardless, what I would say is, I'm prepared to make a decision. Mrs. Reed, if you have any more questions, you're welcome, obviously, but I feel satisfied.
I do not have any more questions, so if either of you would like to make a resolution, you, whether to approve or deny it, would be the Resolution 2020-25, if you need a
Okay, I'm going to make a Resolution 2020-25 for the denial on case 2020-35-ZC for the, that was presented and proposed from the Zoning Department, and I'll leave it with a recommend, or a proposal for denial, the resolution.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion of the proposed resolution before we vote? Hearing none. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes, to deny.
Yes. By voting yes, you are voting in favor of the resolution, which is to deny. That is correct. Resolution 20-2020-25 is hereby denied.
And I, I do want to wish them the best, and I hope that whatever happens moving forward, that, that it is in the best interest of the township and of the, of their business. So, hopefully, just wish them the best in the future, and I appreciate you moving through the process and being respectful and everything with that, so.
Yeah, I feel like I owe a little bit of color, as I made the resolution. I would just add that, I, I agree with Mr. Stubbs. I feel like, you know, we should be consistent throughout the process, or at least have discussed these full options throughout the Zoning Commission and with the county, so we could have the proper information on where the recommendations came from and, and why, related to all of the potential options. I think proposing something different, you know, within 24 hours of the trustee meeting is not efficient, especially when you could be impacting a lot of these residential areas and residents that, that want to speak on behalf and, and haven't had time to prepare and properly discuss that and, you know, give their opinions on that topic. So, I just feel like, you know, it should have been a little bit better handled on, on that front, if we want to propose something different.
I agree, and I thank all the residents for, for coming, for writing the letters. Anytime we get residents involved in, in local government, I think it is great, so I appreciate your time and coming and staying involved with that as well. Is there any other discussion on this zoning case? All right, at this time, we're going to start the discussion on the use of funds received under the CARES Act for the coronavirus relief. So, I have kind of made a list, I don't know if any of you guys have, about some things that have just kind of popped into my mind over the course of the last couple weeks or month, since our last trustee meeting, about things that I think would be a possibility to spend the CARES Act funding on. I've also kind of asked around what other townships are spending it on, because I think that's always helpful, too, if it's working for their township. I think it, it could possibly work for ours. So that is something that I, that I've asked about, and there's really no order. I, I didn't number these, and what I think is the most important or least important by any means. But I do personally think updating the trash billing so that it can be done electronically, I think perfectly aligns with the CARES Act. It's less contact, the people, the individuals, the citizens are having to come and pay their, physically pay there with their check here. They could do it online, and I know as a person that pays a lot of my things online, that would probably really alleviate some of the stress of some of the residents of paying that. I know before our water bill was, was online and digital, it was a struggle for me to remember to run that check down there on the 30th. So, I think that would be a nice update, but, but I don't know the cost of that. That is something that if you're interested, I have no problem at least looking into, calling around and seeing what other places are doing. One of my next things is, obviously, you guys do not use the ladies' room here very often, but updating some of the bathrooms with some automatic flushing toilets, even sinks with automatic faucets or soap dispensers, just using the bathroom here this evening. Flushing the, when you go to flush the toilet, it does not flush. You kind of have to flush it twice or hold it down here, so I think that would be a really great benefit to the township to get some updates there with that. Some of the other townships are installing Nest thermostats or various digital thermostats, even ring doorbells, or I guess they have Nest doorbells, I'm not sure. So one of the townships gave me, update the internet to be able to hold more use. um, update the internet to be able to hold more users. I understand there's been some issues in the past of, if there's more than one or two people here trying to use the internet, there might be some, um, issues with that. I am not a technology person. So, um, Mrs. Sewell, or if anybody else is, is better at technology, you might be a great resource for that. Update any automatic doors that need it. I don't know if garage doors, I don't know what the road department needs as far as that. Um, we, we did receive an email and I think the gentleman had really good ideas on that email and it was, um, update our laptops for the zoning person, the fiscal officer, um, the police chief, uh, road department supervisor, even Lori or whoever would be filling Lori's position and possibly the trustees, just so that we are, we are virtual, just so that all of the people that are on all these meetings have the capability of video. Um, I think it's important for them to be able to see who their trustee is, who is representing them. Um, we've already talked about updating the meeting room. I know Mr. Heaton worked on some, a bid for that. Um, I didn't know if even desks or chairs or anything else needed updated to try to fit within that. Um, COVID friendly barriers or what have you. Those were just some ideas that, that I had came up with. Uh, one of the townships was looking into getting a new AC, a new central air for the township building. I personally don't know the age of our AC here. I know it hasn't been, um, purchased, I don't believe since I've been here, but that's, I mean, it's not that long. Um, I'm sure that there's other people that would know that answer, but that I know personally, when we put ours in, that is a substantial, um, cost. So if that's something that is being looked at to be done in the near future, it could be something that is done using this CARES fund, which is something that I would not have thought of. So I appreciated, um, getting that feedbacks and from others, from some of the surrounding townships. So those, those were, I think, all mine, uh, ideas or suggestions. I know I kind of went through those pretty quickly, but you guys have anything to add or suggestions on that? Please, please feel free.
I know I talked with someone at Jackson Township and they're looking at touchless faucets, potentially touchless foot, uh, toilets. They're also looking at getting a, um, marquee sign outside of their township hall. Uh, that way they can put announcements, scrolling announcements on and people don't actually have to get, get out of their car and come to the building. So, uh, I, I think that could be a potential, um, to get a nicer sign out front that definitely probably needs up, updated.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Stubbs. I had not even thought of that. I, I think that's great.
So, but to, to keep it, it has to be COVID related. So, I mean, if we're doing an air conditioning unit, I guess you could justify it by filter the air maybe. Is that how they are, they're justifying it? I, I don't, I don't.
That's my understanding because I honestly would not have thought about that, but I guess newer AC units have better filtration. That was the only, um, but I know that, that they're definitely looking into it and there's several of them doing it. I, I spoke to Mark Heaton about that. Um, and I think that, uh, they talked about that a little bit. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Heaton, at the, um, Township Association, uh, meeting. I don't know if it was just for fiscal officers or for everybody, but they did mention a new AC on that as well. So, again, I don't know the age of it, or even if that's something that we would like to consider, but I know that those are pretty costly. So if that's something that, that we can spend it on.
Yeah, I, I'd rather see our money spent on, um, the building and improvements. I'm not sure. I saw the quote for the audio visual. I'm not sure we need a camera with this, uh, swivel control. I think our room's kind of small, uh, for that. Um, but a wide angle camera like Perry Township has that picks up the entire front of the room would be more than, more than enough. Um, you, you just the amount of money on that, on the, uh, AV equipment seemed, seemed high, 15,000 or so. So, uh, I, I, it's, I get that the money is available, but I would prefer to use it for things that would benefit uh, the township for the, for a long time and not necessarily, uh, our tiny meeting room to be equipped with HDTV, uh, filming capabilities.
Yeah, I, I think those are all valid points. I guess I'd ask a couple of questions that may help us. Uh, Mr. Heaton, you know, the two, two questions I had was, we, we did confirm that we could use this funds for, um, for the, uh, police officers' salaries and wages, correct?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Raymer. Uh, the, the entire amount, if we wanted to do so, could be used to offset the police, uh, department's salaries and benefits. They are the one exception to the requirement that anything used, used that CARES Act money is used for must be outside of the original budget. Uh, for police and in case of the city, a fire and EMS salaries, even though they were budgeted, they are presumed to be at risk every time they come to work. And as such, their salaries can be charged against the CARES Act, uh, funds.
Okay. And, and with that, has there been an extension? I haven't seen if there was an extension or do we need to have, um, these, these, uh, um, expenditures allotted for here directly?
The new, uh, House bill at the, in Columbus has been approved by both the House and the Senate. It is awaiting the signature of the governor at a webinar today that I was, um, part of. It was, um, stated that the governor may well sign the, that bill tomorrow. Uh, and they were hoping the funds would begin to be distributed within a week or 10 days. And we will be getting a hundred and $4,000 in addition to the 39 that we've already received.
Okay. And, and just triple checking the, the timing of when the expenditures need to occur and everything, we still have plenty of salaries and benefits to cover the 140 odd thousand dollars.
We do have sufficient salaries and benefits to cover the entire amount if we so choose to do it. And I didn't answer part of your earlier question. The deadlines have all been extended because of the, uh, as a result of the new House bill that's just been passed by in Columbus. Uh, the October 15th date is now November 20th for us to encumber, uh, whatever funds we plan to use and what is not encumbered would then get returned to the county auditor. And although we have now until February for reporting, we still must have whatever we purchase in-house and installed by the end of December. We now, but then we have until February to pay for those items. So we haven't really got a whole lot of time if we want to do anything major in terms of building improvements. We're going to have to move quickly. I believe that Jeremy Holbrook was on the call. Yes, he still is. Um, so anything we might want him to research, um, will want to do so quickly, uh, to make sure that we have it completed by the end of December. And specifically to the upgrades to the sound and AV system in the meeting room, should you decide to go with the proposal as it is or ask for modifications. That could be an issue because there was such a backlog for this kind of equipment. Uh, because churches and government entities and businesses are all wanting to buy this kind of equipment. So if we can't have it, uh, received and installed by the end of December, then it can't be used, uh, using the CARES Act funds.
Okay. Um, and the other question, I think this is more of a formality for the future, but, um, that money gets put into the general fund, but, um, we would be able to pay it out for the police salaries. So my, my assumption would be absent of changing the police expenditures for remainder of the year. The police fund is the one that would really get, uh, the benefit long-term. They would, they would actually have additional funds in the fund. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, but let me just clarify the whole process. When the 39,000 was received and this additional 104,000 is received, it will not go into the general fund. We have a special CARES Act coronavirus fund set up for all expenditures, uh, related to CARES, um, funds. And so what we will do if we decide to transfer the payroll out of the police budget and police fund will, in, into the CARES fund, uh, it will certainly increase the fund balance in the police fund.
Okay. It, it, so that's all the questions I have. I, I guess my perspective is in line with what you guys are saying, uh, exactly is that, you know, I, I, I think we need to be knowing that we can use this already for expenditures that we already have set up for today. Um, this will benefit the township already immediately. So anything that we decide to incrementally purchase, we need to make sure that it truthfully is, you know, a, an incremental benefit that the township is needing in the near future. Um, or an expenditure that we'll see in the future that we want to, um, you know, replace something or the marquee, I think is a good example. Uh, we just have to weigh it out that knowing that we can already spend these funds already for existing expenses.
Yeah, I like the ability. I didn't realize we had the ability for the police salaries. So, um, I mean, that could save us a, a year or two on running an addition, uh, uh, an updated levy at some point in the future. So I'm, I'm all for, uh, it, any additional money. We need to wisely spend what we do and then putting the rest to our police department for sure.
Yeah. I, uh, uh, what I would say is that you, somebody has suggested the internet, like, uh, service there for the internet, you know, helping the capacity or something, knowing when we get back into, um, office that we may continue virtually along with in, uh, online or how, or in person and virtually at the same time, you know, something like that. I could see, you know, helping the township. Um, I agree, the, the, uh, amount of expenses, I was a little taken aback by the, the quote that came in. Um, I understand there's a lot of important equipment there, but I don't think they were all useful to us for the amount of use we would get it for. So, um, and knowing that we'd have trouble installing that, I, I struggle with that one, but, um, I do think having a little foresight if we want to up the internet or something like that, a pretty de minimis fee, I'm guessing something along those lines, but, um, I, I think I'm in favor unless someone has an idea of something that like we feel like we really need right now. I, I would be in favor of just doing exactly what Mr. Stubbs said and, and putting this towards existing expenses and, uh, you know, saving the township, you know, going back to them with a levy much sooner than we would need to if we spent this just on police.
I guess for me, my, um, two things would be, I don't know if our fiscal officer, or I know today this evening his computer is not working. Um, I don't know wh- which computer it is, but I don't know if that would be something that, uh, he would need or that would be useful for him or, or for for any of the other people that are, that are being expected, that we are trustees are expecting them to attend these meetings virtually and making sure that they have that capability to do so, um, so that, so that we can see them and hear them and all of that stuff. I think that that's beneficial to the citizens.
I think Mr. Heaton's computer is provided by UAN.
Okay.
Mr. Stubbs is correct. If my computer cannot be repaired, then UAN will have to, um, send me another one. But it, it comes from the, as a matter of fact, I believe that we're scheduled next year to get a new computer anyway. So, cause every two years they replace them. I also wanted to follow up on the decision that was made at the September tra- regular trustee meeting about sub grants. At that time, we weren't fully aware about how the funds could be used to offset police salaries. So I did reach out to both the city and to the school, uh, to offer the possibility of a sub grant. Uh, by the time I talked to the cities, I talked to Judy Gililand immediately. And she said, well, now are you aware that this is a possibility about the police? And I said, I've heard rumors, but I don't know how it works. As I heard today in my, in my webinar, every day the rules change. So what we heard yesterday may not be the rules tomorrow. And when Judy mentioned about the police and fire and EMS that day, uh, it was still a proposed possibility. Of course, now it's, it's official that we can do that. The federal government has, has stated it, um, every way to Sunday. Although initially they had two agencies who were arguing each other. One said yes, one said no, but it's now official. Yes. Uh, so Judy said, if we don't get anything from you, that's okay. By the time I talked to Pat Shively a few days later, when she called me back, I had already said to her, this isn't going to happen. When I talked to Superintendent Ben Richards at the school, he, I caught him at the end of the day. It must've been a hard day. He said, I feel like crying. This is the happiest news I've received all day. But I understand, Mr. Raymer, that since you saw the information about the police being eligible, that you and Mr. Richards have had a further conversation, and I think he's aware that he's not going to get his sub grant from us.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's what I understand from talking to, to Mr. Richards.
Yeah, I, I just told him that in passing, you know, we, we talk on school issues and different things. I'm involved with the school and, uh, the building project and I just let him know that there were some things that came along and we were definitely prioritizing the township whenever we had spend there. So we would keep him posted, but it didn't look like there would be probably leftover funds. And he understood. He said, his money we never had. So, I, I wouldn't have expected it otherwise. You guys would take care of yourselves at first. So I don't think that's a major concern.
I agree with you. And as a matter of fact, I never heard back from the Valley View Treasurer. And I presume the reason is, is because once, uh, Mr. Richards was aware that this probably wasn't going to happen, um, he, she didn't even bother to call me. So anyway, that particular approval you gave me last month, uh, it still stands, but it won't be used.
Okay. I just have, uh, one more thing, I guess. I completely understand giving, uh, money to the police. My only, I guess, question about that is I, I personally think that we should give a, I'll say a large chunk to the police to off, offset. We are not, um, I guess our general fund is not, um, that, that great at, at this time. Hasn't been for a while. So part of me thinks that, uh, personally that we should keep some of the money, or I should say spend some of the money on some needed updates because otherwise our general fund really does not have the funds to do updates that are needed. So I think that there are some low-cost updates that can be done and still give a significant portion to the, the police to offset, um, their wages and benefits and things like that. So I, I, as you're both are aware, our general fund is, is not, is not that great. So, that is just my, my opinion. I mean, nothing that would be anything significant, but some updates that I believe need done.
I have no major concern with that for sure. Uh, definitely it's completely in line with, you know, what I was suggesting that if we have anything that we see, we can spend it on that if, if we think we're going to incur that in the next few years. Do, do you feel like there's, um, things we should ask Jeremy about? Or do you have specific ones? Again, you want to reiterate? I know you mentioned some things before, um, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, um, I know. Well, this, this one would probably be a decently costly, but I think it's a good one to ask Jeremy. He's very knowledgeable about this. Jeremy, do you have any idea about the age of the AC unit?
We have multiple ones on the roof. So each, there's a, a unit on each section of our roof. And they've been replaced at different times. Um, the one over the trustees room, I believe, was most recently replaced.
Okay. So that one's the, the newer one, I, I guess. I don't know. I don't know how new that newer one is. That's where my, are you able to help us out with that, Mr. Holbrook?
I'm not in the office, so I do not have that information in front of me. Um, if you have any questions, you're more than willing or more than welcome to email me and I will try to address those, but, off the top of my head, I think I agree with Jake. I think the one on top of the Board of Trustees office is the newest one. And I think the second newest one would probably be the PD. Um, but I can't be certain about that. So,
I remember.
I can definitely check on it.
I remember replacing the one on top of the trustees section a couple of years ago because there was a issue with how they got the old one off. Um, but I, that, that could have been five years ago at this point. I, I quite remember.
I'm totally with you, Jake. It, it, it could have been five. It could have been two. It could have been seven. I don't know.
Right. I honestly, I remember doing it, but I, I can't tell you when.
Right.
All right. Thanks. Cause I just know that it's going to be a significant, you know, expense whenever it comes up. Just from personal knowledge I have of my own replace. So I can't imagine replacing something in this size of a building. So.
Mr. Heaton, is, uh, is there any way we could justify the replacement of our, our roof under the, with these funds? Cause I know that's a major expense we're going to have to incur at some point in the near future.
I think that'd be a hard sell, Mr. Stubbs. Um, the, the idea, there are several criteria that have to be met. Uh, one is it has to be something that's not in the budget, which a roof would be. It, but it has to be specifically to mitigate the risk of COVID exposure. And I'm not sure replacing the roof does that. The entry system would most likely satisfy that requirement with some good documentation. And what I'm going to say is no matter what we do, if it's not you, you- if it's not u- using for police salaries and benefits, I want a legal opinion in the file that it will pass muster when we have an audit two years from now. Because otherwise, if the auditor comes back and says, you didn't document it well, you don't have a legal opinion, we might have to send it back to the state at that point. And we're not in a position that we can do that certainly.
Right. Well, I was, I was wishful thinking on the roof, of course, because I know that's a major expense and was looking for any stretch possible to, uh, to get that covered, maybe stop a drip that, you know, makes mold, which makes our, you know, the air quality poor in our building. So I agree that if, if we need a, um, uh, uh, opinion from the prosecutor's office to make you comfortable, I'm totally fine with that on whatever we, whatever we do.
Thank you.
Mr. Raymer, Mr. Stubbs, the update of the trash bill, and again, I'm not sure the cost of that, um, to be done electronically. I, I don't pay the trash bill out here because I reside within the city limits, but, um, I know Mr. Raymer, Mr. Stubbs, you both do. I don't know if that is something that you guys deem, um, that would benefit our citizens to be able to pay, um, that bill online at all.
I think in the past, when this has been brought up, it's what do we do with the fee that's attached to it? Does the township take a loss, which we can't really do? Or do we pass that on to the residents? So I think that's one of the reasons, uh, we haven't in the past updated it to an online version. Because there's a fee, there has to be a fee associated with it and who, who's responsible for that fee.
Okay. Yes. I believe with, on the city side, obviously, which is a totally different thing. I believe that is passed on to, um, the residents, but I'm not positive of that. That would be something I would have to look into if you, if you would like, but. Okay.
I, I don't have a problem updating the trash billing, uh, but it, we just have to discuss the fee.
Yes.
That's, that's it. I mean, it has to, we have to discuss that. Because that's, that, that's going to be an ongoing cost, not beyond the COVID. So we can update the system, but there's going to be a cost forever, uh, with who, however we hosted or whoever, whoever's running our billing for us. I mean, there's a, there's an ongoing fee that's not going to be covered.
Okay. No, I agree. I just assumed, I guess, from other people that I had spoken to, that the, I will say biggest cost was the upfront cost of getting the software and kind of starting it, if you will. Um, and maybe over the long term, it would save on postage too, because you're not having, I know they're little tiny postcards, but you're not having to print those and mail those. And a lot of people now get electronic, um, bills. So it could just be through email done. Uh, it might help offset that a little bit. I don't know what the cost is that the, I don't have that in front of me, that the trash spends on printing those and mailing them out or time that the, um, trash, the trash clerk spends getting all that ready either. I don't know. It was just, it was something that was brought up that I thought, you know, for me personally, it would, it would help me. I wasn't sure about, um, your guys' thoughts or opinions on that. Haley, did you have something? I saw you turned your camera on there.
I did have a comment. I've had a lot of people reach out to me, um, that want to pay via credit card to the zoning office. And obviously I do not have that capability. So I can only accept cash, check or money order at this time. Um, I also know a lot of people that have a lot of their bills on auto pay. So if there's any way that we could do an electronic thing for the trash billing and it just be automatically paid, uh, that might, one, that would be convenient. Two, that might save, uh, the trash billing person's time with people that are late, because I know a lot of people just forget because it's not a monthly thing even. That's all.
Um, Haley had also mentioned, um, and she might want to elaborate on, on this, having a phone system where they could check their voicemails remotely, um, from home. So I don't, again, I don't know the cost of that or anything, but that was just something that she mentioned. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all, Mrs. Sewell.
Yeah. So, um, when the whole coronavirus, um, thing started and we all started, you know, workly, working strictly remotely if we could, um, I still had to come to the office, you know, a couple of times a week to check, uh, the voicemail, because I could not get the phone system here forwarded to the, the mobile phone, because it would transfer every single phone number, every line to my phone, which obviously I didn't want that. Um, so I had to come back to check the voicemails and I can't do it remotely. Um, so I do have my mobile, but people still do leave me voicemails often here at the office.
Mrs. Sewell, my voicemails at the office get sent to my township email account.
Yeah. And I've tried to do that for myself and I can't figure out how to do that.
Yeah. I can't tell you how it's done either, but I believe that Mrs. Rohrbach could probably help with that.
Okay.
You might want to ask.
Definitely.
Is there anything that the trustees, I guess, would like to, um, cause correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like obviously the sooner the better with getting quotes and everything. Um, by November 20th, we have to, um, appropriate or say what we're going to spend that money on. Is there anything that, um, either the other trustees would like to look into, check for pricing? Um, so that we can kind of see what we would like to spend any of the CARES money on.
I think updating the bathrooms should be a priority.
I know the women's needs updated very much so. So, so I agree with that one. Um, and I, I will look into that as much as I possibly can. I don't know if Mr. Holbrook, he's probably way more knowledgeable about that stuff than I am. Um, but I can get on the internet and see. I don't know if the township has a plumber that they regularly use that would be able to come out here. I have no problem calling them and trying to set something up for that. Um, Mr. Holbrook, are you aware of the township having a regular plumber or are you a regular plumber, Mr. Holbrook? You're kind of the jack of all trades, I feel like.
Uh, usually I'm the regular plumber, but it, you know, it's up to the board on whether they want to use that CARES Act money to pay for the labor or not, or strictly for the, uh, materials, uh, that would be up to the board.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for your willingness to even invol- volunteer, if you will, to, to do that and to help out. So I don't know, uh, Mr. Stubbs or Mr. Raymer, how you feel about that.
Yeah, government, government building, nothing against Jeremy, of course, but I would think we would probably want to professionally install. Um, and Jeremy has his, his regular work to do and not necessarily mess with this.
Okay.
I agree. What are we considering? The, the toilets and faucets touchless? Is that the upgrade we're looking for? Or is there more?
That's what I was considering.
That, yeah. Yes, paper towels too.
Okay. Yeah. Makes sense. I, I, I would imagine there's outfits that probably handle A to Z on that kind of stuff for commercial buildings, I would assume, just a matter of finding it.
Gentlemen, you're going to have to help me out here a little bit. Um, and I have no problem calling or Mr. Easton, if you'd like to, that it doesn't, or, or either of you. Um, the men's restroom here, is it just one toilet? Can you tell me that way? If I would be the one to call for quotes, I would know exactly what I'm, I don't, I don't frequent the men's room. So.
Mrs. Ray, one, one toilet, one urinal in one sink.
Thank you very much.
Jeremy, would you be willing to, um, um, research that with a plumber? Because you probably would be the best one to be able to talk about it. And I don't know whether an electrician is needed for automatic, um, touchless faucets, touchless paper towel holders, touchless soap dispensers and touchless toilets. I don't know whether that needs a, an electrician as well as a plumber, but is that something you could look into for the trustees?
Yeah, I can make time to try to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook.
And in terms of the November 20th date, of course, it is a ways off, but it's also going to be here very quickly. My full intention is that you will pass a resolution that we will use all the funds and we will encumber everything. And then we'll figure out how it's going to get used.
So.
Until the end of December to do that.
Okay. So just, I just want to make sure I ha- I have a handle on this and I'm, I'm thinking this through correctly. So by the November 20th, we really just have to say that we are going to spend a hundred and forty some thousand dollars within our own township. We do not necessarily have to say we're going to spend 10 grand on one thing, 20 on the other. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. We have to do that by the end of December?
We will have to have everything installed that we purchased by the end of December, or else the funds have to go back. So as an example, in today's webinar that I attended, they were talking about subscriptions, um, for who knows what, that might involve several years. Uh, you can't use that for CARES Act, uh, payment, except for the period between now and the end of December. Um, so if something can't be installed until January, it can't be paid for with CARES money. Unless the federal government changes it tomorrow, which they may very well do.
So, Mr. Easton, I have a question that, um, if we so choose to go with some of these other options, um, there was some discussion about if more than 10,000 was spent, there needed to be more than, um, one quote. Did you find out if there was, if that was accurate or if there was an amount?
Mr. Peterson emailed me today and told me the, the requirement to get multiple quotes is 50,000 and above.
Okay.
So I think we're good with any project we might consider doing.
Okay.
And I will also mention that, um, Mark Keener contacted me because he was concerned whether you could actually make a decision tonight based on how we put the public meeting notice out. And I asked Mr. Peterson about that too, and he said that would not be, uh, would not be a problem, even though we said we were going to discuss the use of CARES Act money. If you decide to make a decision tonight, uh, you can do so. I'm not sure that we're in a position to make that decision until we know more information about each project that you would like to consider. Other than the police, that decision can be made, um, at any point in time, because we, we know that we have enough cost to offset the amount of money we have available.
Mr. Easton, if we would so choose tonight, could we make, well, we don't, we have not received the funds yet, so maybe we can't. Um, could we make the resolution to spend the full amount by the 31st? Or is that something we should wait on? Or do we need to actually receive the money before we say we're going to spend it?
I think we should wait till the governor signs
Okay.
legislation, because nothing is guaranteed until he, his signature is on it. So I would suggest we do that at the meeting on October 13th.
Uh, I know the marquee sign was discussed, um, where there was a little discussion about, is there anything else, I guess, that we should be getting quotes on, that you guys are interested in getting quotes on? I know I mentioned updated internet. I am, like I said, I'm not an internet person. I know Mrs. Sewell knows lots more about the internet than I do. I don't know how that works, but I know if we have all five of us in here using the internet, I've heard it doesn't work all that well. So I, I have not experienced that yet, but I've heard that. So I don't know if any of you guys can touch on that, if that's something that we would like to look into, um, spending some of the CARES money on.
I, I think that makes sense. I mean, if, if there's something we need to do hardware wise, I mean, obviously it's probably mostly just a monthly fee of increasing our internet service or something, but, um, uh, just to touch on that, you know, I, I, I fully agree with Mr. Stubbs on the type of equipment and the extent that they had quoted. But I did think it was somewhat interesting if we wanted to do, I mean, LCD TVs nowadays are, you know, a couple hundred dollars. If we wanted to put uh, a, a larger LCD TV or something, or LED TV, uh, that's, you know, 50 inches or something behind us, um, in, in the trustee room, meeting room. So where we have a meeting that's virtual, when people speak at home, if they're, uh, you know, showing themselves virtually, we can see them in the room or position that somewhere that the audience can see them in the room speaking. I, I, I feel like there are some elements of something like that that will be efficient, that would help us move forward. But I just felt like to everyone's else's agreement, you know, I, I felt like tens of thousands of dollars was way too exorbitant for what we're looking for, but maybe spending 500 to a thousand dollars to get, you know, a speaker, uh, with surround sound in, in one television, um, that could, that could project that. And then we may need a microphone or something and maybe a thousand or two, but that was more in line with what I was expecting was a couple thousand dollars.
Uh, Mr., I'm going to ask you a question, I think, um, and Mr. Stubbs is going to be able to touch on this more than I am. I know a few times we've had, I know we had the auditor Carl Keith came in a couple of years ago and we have a, I was looking for it around the room. We have a, um, an older, I believe it's an Epson like projector thing for them to use. And sometimes it can be a little finicky, um, if you will. So I personally think that that might be something that would be useful to update. I don't know the cost of those. I can't imagine a little projector being a significant amount of money. But I think that that's something that would be helpful in, in updating. I don't know how old that one is, but I know we've had to use it a few times. Uh, we use it for the zoning case, um, the gravel pit zoning case. And then when the auditor was here and it was just, it, it could be, it could be updated a little bit.
Yeah, I, I agree. I feel like you can do that with the television as well too. Like they could be multipurpose, because nowadays you can just take an HDMI cord and plug it into most all computers and, and they could project directly on a television screen. Um, so I, I, I don't know if we could kill a couple birds with one stone. I'm sure an IT professional could tell us that, but I would think just a monitor like that, that you could dual purpose for either the virtual meetings or in person where you're projecting on the screen.
No, I think that's great. If we can use it for both, I think that would work. It would save money and space and everything.
The, the only problem, I think, is the projector screen right, retracts, whereas you'd have this television always on the wall, but I don't know that that's a concern.
Let me explain a little bit, if I may, about the whole proposal for the sound and AV system that we received from Larry Burton and his company. And Jeremy, you were at that meeting also, so, um, please chime in if I misstate something or forget to say something. Uh, the idea of the camera and the screen, the retractable screen is exactly for the reason that Mrs. Reed just stated. The current camera, uh, is very old. It doesn't work with any computer that we would have now. I understand they have to go find an old computer, if I remember correctly, Jeremy, um, to, um, be able to even use any projection. And with a new camera, it's going to be a much wider picture, which on our current screen would then make the picture smaller because it's wider. It's not going to be as high. And so the screen would be a wider screen to allow, um, bigger visuals in that regard. Um, that, that is the projector and the screen. Jeremy, have I missed anything on that aspect?
I don't believe so. Like you said, the screen would be shorter but wider. It'd be more like a widescreen format.
In terms of the sound and the camera on the, um, trustees, the idea was we have to someday have in-person meetings again. And you've already said, once we leave the red level, which of course we're at again today, and move to orange or higher, then we will begin meeting in person again. So the sound was going to be an issue because we're going to be wearing masks as long as the pandemic, uh, is around. And that could be who knows how long, another year, two years, six months, anyone's guess. But as long as we are wearing masks, we know it's difficult to hear people through a mask, even when you're close to them. And in a public meeting, it will be much, much harder for the audience to be able to hear us. So the idea of having microphones at each person's desk was to address that problem with being able to hear in the room. At the same time, if we continue to do WebEx as well as in-person meetings, because I, I think we all agree that the amount of participation from the residents has been significantly higher, um, as a result of doing these WebEx meetings, uh, there's going to be an issue of how is, how will we be heard out on the internet? So the microphones again would help, um, Haley or someone would be controlling those microphones so that there's not overfeed from one to the other one. so that there's not overfeed from one to the other one. And there would be a few speakers in the ceiling that the ones in the room would be able to hear it through loudspeakers. The camera would be specifically for use of the people online to be able to see the trustees. And the idea of getting a movable camera was only a few hundred dollars more, if I recall. Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong. A few hundred dollars more than just buying a camera itself. And that would allow whoever is speaking to be front and center for those watching online. The last thing was the TV screen, TV. And that would be actually not behind us. It would be on the wall facing 725. And that would allow the trustees to see whoever is online, particularly when they're talking online. So those are all the reasons for each of those items. Have I missed anything on that, Jeremy?
No, I think you've covered everything pretty well, to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you. So it is a lot of money. It depends on what you want, but that would be something that would address all the issues that we have going forward as long as the pandemic is around and as long as we want to continue to do WebEx online meetings as well as in-person.
I'll just respond very quickly. I, I see a huge benefit with having that kind of stuff. I think over $10,000 is beyond what I would expect for that. I would be happy if you guys maybe have some perspective, if we could discuss or negotiate doing a scaled down version of that that may meet our need, but might not be top of the line or whatever they may offer. I, I personally would believe that, you know, there, there's got to be something in the 5,000 or less range that could meet most of our needs pretty sufficiently, but maybe I'm wrong about that.
What I might suggest, Mr. Raymer, is that we meet with Larry Burton again. And if you would be available to sit in on that meeting, we could discuss those options.
Yeah.
If you'd like me to put that meeting together, I can do so. I know you're typically available after 4:30.
Yeah. And I can make myself available for other days. And what I, what I would say is, you know, for the other trustees, again, prioritization. We're talking about anything we want to do. I think the bathrooms make a lot of sense. I think that's a priority because something we're going to incur. I think we all just need to make a quick decision, not quick, but just make a decision. Do we feel like long-term, we want to prioritize the virtual meetings when we go back to in-person? I think it makes a lot of sense based on the things we've discussed. As long as you guys do as well, I'm very happy to meet again and, and try to work through some potential alternatives that can get us at least 80 for the 20 on what we're looking to do, but maybe not have all the bells and whistles.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Raymer. I think that, I was a little surprised by the price tag, but I don't know how much that stuff costs. I've never, never paid for something like that. So I, I, obviously I agree with updating the bathrooms. I think it's something that needs to be done. It will help update the building overall and something that our general fund will have to incur over time. The, is there anything else that you guys would like to look into for prices before our next meeting? Another marquee sign was brought up. I do see there's some benefits to that, posting meeting minutes or not meeting minutes. I'm sorry, meeting notices or things going on out in front of the, the township building. I do see some benefits to that. Mr. Stubbs brought that up. Trying to think of other things. I don't know if the, you guys said that Mr. Houston's laptop is provided by UAN. Mr. Jacoby, he's on, he wrote that email and I thought it was a very, something I hadn't thought of. And I appreciated that email that, that he sent. I don't know if the other, the people that I mentioned need those. And that would be a lower cost thing for some of those people since we are expecting them to somehow get on the computer and be on, be a part of our meetings. Or even updating the trash, even if we just want to get a price to see how much that would be out of the funds and go from there. I don't know. But at least having some of those quotes might be helpful so we know what, what chunk we want to spend on the different things moving forward.
Mr. Stubbs, have anything?
I, I don't have anything other than what we've already covered.
Okay. So I guess we have, Jeremy is taking the lead on the bathrooms and that's going to get done. Mr. Houston, you're going to work with the audio visual and I'll definitely make myself available. We'll try to work on that. Those are two things. And we can come back to the group, make a decision on that because we have two meetings ahead. And then I, I don't have anything else that I want to prioritize. Ms. Reed, I know you've mentioned a couple of things. Do you feel like any of those are, are ones you want to prioritize and definitely would consider them? But I, I don't have any that I, I think that I would choose to prioritize at this time.
So with that, it sounds like we need to go to our next meeting and come back with the quotes and discuss this further. So I don't see any further business tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I think we are adjourned. Thank you very much, Haley. Thanks for setting this up. Thought you did a good job presenting the zoning case and we will meet again on the 13th.
Thanks, everyone.